I can read both through the hair.
Hmm?
Yeah.
I can help.
I can read that.
Is that mine? A letter's in here.
You try it first.
Ready for the approval, second.
Plankish was moved around home. They took over and they are just very wanted town. They're in this process of, hey, we put temporary license in courtroom. Day tomorrow will be four Wednesday. Have a list on Friday. One guy is kind of sick with his bad. In Friday night, I got a phone call from the Assistant Police Chief. We had an issue with on a Friday at the corridor with that bucket building subcontracted out. There's water and sludge. You know, he's extracted it from down the basement, taken it up in the elevator and just dumped it out in the alleyway. It's water and concrete. Mr. Wade called the police. Went into a little bitty parking lot or a little gravel way right there. It's part of the alleyway anyway and part of, went into a jar. So I'm sure all three of you or not one of you heard the phone call from already. He called the police Friday. I got a phone call and then he was not done yelling and so he yelled at me this morning. I said, as soon as I speak with the contractor, we'll clean it up best we can. So that's what that's at. I mean, so, and then he was, he was mad because the OSHA Extension Office and Kelly's office was moved to Friday, Thursday and Friday with trailers and stuff and he was mad because he was blocked in. I ran away and said, well, you can park in front. But I didn't say anything. Tommy moved the stuff, Kevin moved the truck, Kevin moved her truck. And so.
That's the same guy that we done bought the tire for to get the driveway. And he called me and said his driveway was chipping out. So he wants to do a 3D report. I said, we'll do anything to jail hall, as long as we can get it anyway.
It seem like he's a guy that just keeps hauling work from there to us.
And then.
Enough's enough.
The one north of her, or north of him, I guess that would be Hamlin, right? She got upset because of the block wear and everything stuff there. There was no place to put, no one else to put it. Block wear, so they were cleaning it up when they have. She was fine. She just.
Just $4,000.
Was mad because no one told her. I don't know how to get a hold of her or anything else. She got, she got.
Place needs to be.
I just picked off my stuff to say use that little bit area because I didn't have any other area.
Straight farmland. Yeah.
Other than that, all the scene around units are installed. They're going to be finished. They're wrapping, wrapping the deckwork. The heat pumps, they're putting them in, but they're not ready to go yet. So other than that, we're all doing it. It's not, it's not the courthouse, our courtroom, I tell you that one. It's the courthouse itself, but I appreciate everyone dealing with it and trying to do the best I can.
Mr. Little, you would go ahead and talk to Mr. O'Grady. We have lots of citizens, so you can get it for us.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Donnie.
All right. Good morning, everybody. My name's Doug Little. I'm the membership sales manager for the Air Med Care Network. You guys are probably more familiar with Airyback or Eagleman as some of the aircraft that kind of apply people in emergencies. Well, all of our companies are still separate companies, but the membership to our company is all of all under the Air Med Care Network now. And what we wanted to talk to y'all about this morning was the possibility of having membership for the county employees. We have, we have these membership business plans in place with a bunch of different counties. Woodward, Woods, Elvis, Dewey, I'm just trying to go over the ones in my head in my area. Harper, Beaver, Major, there's still some more of us, all I can remember off the top of my head. Where the county actually purchases these memberships for their employees. So if you're a member and you're flown, you're out of pocket costs for that flight to your destination, no matter what insurance picks up. So company wise, you know, covering our 220 some bases, which is in 32 states now. Your map says 28, but we're 32 states now. The company wide average is $25,000. Depending on what your insurance is, how your plans lay, you know, they can pick up anywhere from 40 to 80% of that flight. And sometimes they don't pick up any of it if they don't think it's medically necessary. But just say, best case scenario, if they do pick up 80%, at least somewhere around $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 out of pocket, that is forgiven. That is forgiven. These memberships don't just cover your employees, they cover everybody under your, under their roof. Doesn't matter whether they're related or not, doesn't matter whether they like them or not. Everybody under that roof is considered one membership. There's an unlimited amount of flights per year. You know, we go to Oklahoma City, Enid, Wichita, Amarillo, wherever, wherever you need to go, wherever your doctor says to go. We do two types of flights. We do hospital to hospital transfers and we do scene flights. And I know, I know it wasn't very long ago, we landed out here at the airport and picked up a person. Couple of different plans we got. If the county chooses to have this as a benefit for the employees, we do what's called the census plan. And the big thing about that is, well, a couple of things. One, it's not there as much paperwork. And two, if you have any turnover during the year, the county is actually buying a slot. So how many, I don't know how many employees y'all even have.
97.
How many?
97.
97, okay. So in that event, you'd be buying 97 slots. So if somebody quits or gets terminated during the year and you replace them, the person that comes on is actually taking that slot. The membership doesn't go with that person that quit or was fired. So if you have a considerable turnover, most businesses think that's a huge advantage. So. The other option is if you guys don't feel like you can do that, we can do a payroll deduct. This still gives the employee a discounted rate. Standard, standard membership rate is $65 per year per household. From three memberships to 49 is $55 a year per household. And all, all this stuff's in the folders. And from 50 to 149 memberships, which cover you guys, is $50 a year per, per membership. So. So for 100, you know, 100 employees, you know, you're looking at $50 a piece, that's $5,000. That's basically one, that's basically one out of pocket cost for a flight covered. Do y'all have any questions? I'm sure I didn't cover everything anybody wants to come in with, you know, wanted to know.
$5,000 is one time a year payment.
Yeah, it's, yeah. In your guys' scenario, it'd be $50 a year per, per household. No, per year.
Any questions? Definitely.
Well, I think we ought to talk to the employees and see if coming in as a benefit or something. I had one of those out of pocket expenses this year.
Well, did you know better? Is that, was that roughly, I mean, insurance wise, does that, your interest pick up 70, 80% or how? If you don't mind sharing.
We got so many bills from that night, I can't even tell you exactly what it was, but I think they picked my son up and took him to Oklahoma City and I think it was $30 some thousand, like $35,000 or $38,000 for the one, one trip.
Right.
When my brother passed away, the helicopter was on its way from Woodward to Howard. And they had to stop him. And my sister-in-law is going to have to pay for it anyway. And her place of, his place of employment and insurance, they did something, if she did, it does not have to pay. It was significant amount. I don't know if his employer ended up paying for it or the company just decided, okay, okay.
Yeah, I think we paid six or seven thousand, about 30 some thousand.
Yeah, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't matter what your insurance picks up, even if you have employees that don't have insurance, you know, through the county or whatever. As long as you're a member, you're out of pocket costs is a regular period. Yeah, sure, okay. I'll just get back in touch with you guys in a couple of weeks.
And if we decide not to do this as a benefit, you can still do it for the employees.
Yeah, we can, we can do a payroll. We can do a payroll deduct at $55. The only difference between that, the payroll deduct plan and the, and the county purchase is those brochures that's in there. They have to fill out one of those, so we have to have name, address, phone number, date of birth.
Does that still cover, like where I got three kids, it still covers the whole household?
Sure, yeah, it still covers your whole household, but.
Seen that one before.
Yeah, but just to be, just to make sure I'm clear, the, like if the county purchased it, we just do a spreadsheet of the employee information, last name, first name, mailing address, phone number, that kind of stuff. Alrighty. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You want what?
This is a modern big stack, you could have done that.
Took a lot of years to build up to that. I was, I had this a year ago. Top was last year. $55 a month, that's $7,000, that's probably a few years. Yeah, would one?
Kyle, you look really nice today.
That's what I was waiting on, what do you want?
Screen door blew off a while back.
Just happened to drive by, but.
It's the new look. Yeah, I went to her get ice, my tea, and she was there. She's a purple.
Nice, Kyle.
I didn't say anything.
Oh my goodness.
I didn't really have to have jail training. I didn't get the training when I was there. What? Waiting for the butt.
No, no butt. I'm turning over a new leaf today.
You're going to be positive and happy.
Positive and happy all the time.
I think it's time for me to quit my job.
Would you like me to come sit with you this afternoon with my positiveness and my happiness?
I think traffic's going to flood a lot. I'm so worried about traffic flooding, some, some place freezing over. I didn't say which place. Kind of hurt a little bit, didn't it? I didn't say which place. Could be just a freezer. You just can't assume, you don't, you don't understand.
I know what assuming means, that is right.
People know a lot.
You know, in two weeks, you should be nice to me because, you know, we get to point our county newspaper and all. You should be like buying my lunch and telling me I look really nice.
No one's coming to your favor.
You don't have to think of it that way. Because we've been nice to you.
We still want you to earn it this year. You're going to have to divvy up a little. Soon as Doug pays me my $200, I can pay you. $400 for her number. We'll talk about later. Hey, Newsgram, did you catch that? Lenny just said she's buying lunch in the next couple of weeks. Steak.
Steak, is that what it said?
Yeah. Steak and ale. Hey, I'm looking for lunch this week. My wife's leaving me for the week, so I might get some.
I'll find out when I get sworn in.
Told her to bid on some of that stuff at the relay for life. Yeah. One that had a good card to wit is for enough to get you 15 rubies. Now she's got training this week in Tulsa. What about the boys? Jason's going with her and Hope and Clay staying with me. Oh, boy. We got hate. Oh, day long, right? A lot of fair horse stuff, don't they?
Let's try the little restaurant out in Jet. I don't think they have steaks, but I have to go to Jet Lounge, right? I'll cut your hot dog and I'll put it in the shape of a T and I'll.
No, it's a real thing. I didn't split the middle. I'll bring the steak if you just cook it.
I will cook it.
And I'll eat it. All right.
You'll cook it if I eat it? I mean, you'll, you'll eat it if I cook it? Are you confused?
I'm confused now.
And if you would actually eat it if I cooked it?
I take that back.
That's what I figured.
I retract my previous statement.
Before the confusion.
I just got my butcher calf back. I got plenty of steak on. We may have to eat on the grill all week.
Yeah, that's what we've done for the past three weeks, is eat on the grill. I don't have a kitchen sink. Oh, I have a nice, nice one seat on the grill. It's a little smoky at once. The bathtub and I have been, huh?
The bathtub.
Mom, we're supposed to be there in a day or so hopefully, when I go home, I'll have a kitchen sink. Nicole's asleep, she may shoot him when she, it's her first day in like three weeks she's got to sleep in. So she may shoot him if he makes too much noise, but try to warn her at least.
Like she's going to be walking the door, she'll be unlocked, I don't know.
Well, he asked him not because the door's locked.
She may be standing there a while trying to eat. What's your date?
I'm trying to pay attention. You know, it's not popular.
I'm pretty good doing that to this.
We need to, we're going to want to go, we need to have a, this is more of a book like time to square Valerie in. So let's see if somebody can do that. The first, the first, if you guys want to come. I'll let you know a day.
Should we get in Torian's way?
Actually, it's different schedule than.
I'm sorry, again. If you'll let me know.
I move for the approval, second.
I'll move.
District two.
I move for the approval, second.
We can let's do all these things.
No.
No, no one do that?
No, no, no.
Oh, fair enough.
Scare me, I was like going to.
Don't ever get any more sound, I don't care.
Got one this time.
Okay.
$500. Hey. Five. Yes, $750.
Please go.
Hey, that's enough. Gets all the money though. That's enough to make a football rock. That's about it.
I move for the approval, second.
On the favor?
Get the road rock.
Closer. I'm a, I'm a part of a rock. I skipped last part of another age today. Okay, now you're just service property, so I guess. We need to get through, geez, there's only three of them.
I know.
Good thing Toby stamped them for him. I'm not saying anything.
These first ones have the surplus and the rest of them together.
My, I'll do mine next week. The one will be ready because it's still meeting the X's, so.
Just surplus them, don't dispose of them. Or dispose of them later, it's going to. That way you got all your surplus, it's all done in one time.
So you gonna add a rock trailer to it or? The bottom. About you're on around three or four. Four.
Remember back that day we added five truck trucks to make that come?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Say, wouldn't those drive the Kodiak?
Most time wouldn't.
Those are, I guess they're too good. Don't be there, we were resorting to road.
Even though we got rid of the mosquitoes every time we started one. In the whole neighborhood.
Know that it's hard not to run a neighborhood.
I know. Still, I feel like it's a good beginning. I remember back in the day, we had this little dump, little single legged dump truck.
Make it most to approve all the residences that service properties.
Second that. Third that.
Western Plains Youth and Family Services. Oh, we're catching up again, I'm sorry.
You guys are more smart than around the Kodiak. That's what he said. We can just get you a stamp with your signature next.
I learned that I can have one and you guys can't. I'll be fast then. I know a company that can provide it. Can you guys want to get a stamp?
I can also approve. On the favor? For those who execute an agreement, tobacco, cig.
The option thing is on the next page of it.
Want to move again, full favor?
Yeah, so. Not for you, no reason, split up. We have a license, it's going to cost you more.
An option one?
Yeah. It'll cost you more. Second, on the favor?
Hi.
Same way on the agreement?
Yep.
Thank you.
Business associate agreement, advanced correction of health. No.
There's both of them.
No.
And there's a place on each one of them to sign.
No. You guys were all good with there, you know?
A lot of strange things in here.
Yeah.
Do I?
Thank you for your office degree.
No.
I kinda like the degree.
That place on each one?
Yeah, that, that was, that was both of those next two, you know.
I'm sorry, yeah, who did that one?
They're just one page on each one of Jen?
Would you guys make a motion on that?
I'm sure.
Not yet.
I'm moved for the approval.
Second. On, on favor?
Sorry. Aye.
People their yard row beds. Where are your yards?
Did you say, I'm sorry?
Sell plenty of alley, we can commercialize them.
Four thousand and seventy three dollars.
Close us three hundred footer.
And a, a sun belt says two thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollars.
Nine sixty.
What is all the mark out stuff?
I don't know.
Think they just reprint the page, or they sent something like that.
Make it most to approve sun belt.
I second that.
On favor?
Award, hand over.
Award, yeah.
Make a motion to accept all of it, and award sun belt, hello.
Thank you. I don't guess we had any new ones since I've been here, but we have, cause Amanda's on there. But anyway, they come up and wanted to fill out paperwork, I'm like going, uh, I don't know. So anyway, I called Akko and Akko says, no, you just send us a list. He says, you probably better go ahead and do a list for all of them if you haven't done it in the past three years, so. There's a list that I'm going to just send down to them, and Dale just suggested that we just approve it in the meeting. So it's Dale making you do more work, not me.
Just say family. Lynn Hasty's not reserved anymore?
No, they, yeah, they said he's.
Not just to help, right?
Make it most to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Kyle, got any for team business? Any else?
Sure. I can ask him to jar.
You guys want to.
Now, you can, see, initial that.
You would?
I can't, I gave my pen away.
You gave your pen away.
Make a motion to adjourn, we have to speed that.
No, Toby has the same ones, so.
Hey, we sell those now.
Do you? Just like this? We charge them kind of clerk?
Sure can.
We can work something out here.
Who, um?
Nobody's second.
I second.
First.
I'm in.
Thank you.
I'm third.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.